Good morning. I am pleased to call to order the July 7, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, note the presence of all three commissioners. And I'd like to ask Sheriff Kilkeny, who I know is there he is, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start as usual with some opening Commissioner comments. So first, a quick update on the county's process to determine how to allocate $161.4 million in American Rescue Plan funds. We are committed to using an inclusive, transparent, and equitable process for allocating funding to support projects that take advantage of this one-time opportunity for community investment. As a reminder, we've received 426 project submissions comprising $1.3 billion in requested funds and an additional 157 idea submissions. With only $161 million in funding available, the county will not be able to fund every project. However, through an external review process, we have made it a priority to solicit input from county residents who can bring their experiences to more deeply inform our evaluation process. We were pleased to receive applications to serve as members of a citizen review committee from 75 individuals who were from a diverse cross-section of our county's communities. The 30 individuals selected as final reviewers are representatives of a variety of community sectors, including individuals who identify as Black and African-American, Hispanic or Latino, Asian-American or Pacific Islander, individuals living with disabilities, living in recovery, living on low incomes, and other populations that were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Individuals who have unique insight into community needs were also included, such as those who represented faith communities, volunteer groups, nonprofits, home and school associations, and neighborhood groups. I want to thank all of our reviewers for lending their time and attention to scoring the hundreds of ARPA project proposals. All project submissions have been scored by our citizen review committee, and these scores are now posted on the Recovery Office's website. The county's Recovery Office and county management is in the process of compiling a draft recovery plan, which will then list all the projects that are being recommended for funding. Now, the scores are an important part of the funding decision, but they are not a funding determination in and of themselves. We are also considering the potential for one-time transformative impact and ensuring that the county's priorities for equity and diversity across the county are being met. The draft plan will be made public on the county's website on July 18, and we are hosting two town hall events to share the draft plan with the public and allow folks to comment on the plan. The town halls will include a brief presentation of the draft plan, and participants will be able to provide feedback on the plan during this virtual session. The town halls will be held on July 20, one at 2:00 p.m. and one at 6:00 p.m. The content will be the same during both town halls. To register, you can visit www.montcopa.org/recoveryoffice. And we urge folks to, if you can, to participate in one of these sessions to give us your feedback. We will be taking this feedback into consideration before presenting the final list of recommendations that the commissioners will vote on or at our August 18 meeting. And then next, I want to announce the July Way to Go Monco winners. As you all know, this is open to all county employees, and this is the program that encourages employees to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than 100 county employees have submitted nominations singing the praises of their coworkers. Every month, we are drawing the names of five employees from the list of nominations, and each of those employees will receive a $150 extra bump in their paycheck to recognize them for their work. So this month's winners are first Jennifer Lechkis with the Early Learning Resource Center in our Health and Human Services Department. Their nomination reads, "Jen is an amazing caseworker who is patient and dedicated to helping everyone. She works to help connect her clients to services even outside of the daycare subsidy." And Jen was nominated by Rachel Gingrass. Next is Yuritza Rodriguez in the District Attorney's Office. Their nomination reads, "Yuritza has been a breath of fresh air to our department. She is highly motivated and will offer assistance to whomever with whatever without even being asked. She has proven to be an asset both to our unit and to Montgomery County during her short time here. We're excited to see how she further develops her career." And she was nominated by Shauna Quintrell. Next is Lauren Rakowski, who works in our purchasing department. Lauren reviews contracts, interfaces with all the different county departments, performs legal research, and is often buried under right-to-no requests. Lauren can be asked to lend a hand and her considerable expertise to any situation. She jumps in to assist with a fantastic can-do attitude. If she doesn't know the answer, she will find it. You only need to ask anyone that has communicated or worked with Lauren, and they will confirm she's truly an asset to the county. Lauren was nominated by Bridget Bruthus. Fourth is Jackie Grimes, who works in our Office of Developmental Disabilities in Health and Human Services. Her nomination reads, "Jackie has built trusting relationships with providers of service by continually being accessible and flexible with her time. Jackie is able to see from a broad perspective providers who may be struggling with the many rules and regulations of incident management and know when to do outreach and offer technical support. Jackie is proactive with her work and offers any supports available from the individuals receiving supports from our department." And she was nominated by Vivian Reese. And last, we have Christina Seal, who works in our Office of Children and Youth. Their nomination reads, "Christina is a strong worker who brings her knowledge of child welfare to this agency. Christina helps consumers that call or walk into the agency seeking resources and services. Christina is an asset to my team." Christina was nominated by Contina Mayo. So congratulations to all of our winners, and just a reminder that employee nominations remain open. So if you want to give someone a real pat on the back or a good shout out, please nominate them. And with that, I will turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Congratulations to all the winners. I have one announcement today. I want to remind everyone that July is Crave Monco Month, which is organized by the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. Crave Monco Month is a month-long celebration in July featuring deals at local restaurants, breweries, wineries, and more. Discounts include a percentage or dollar amount off the bill, buy-one-get-one free deals, and a free desserts, appetizers, or cocktails. And to see the specials, you can download the Visit Valley Forge app or visit www.vallyforge.org. This year, over 50 restaurants and Monco makers are participating, and many of the restaurants offer family-friendly accommodations, outdoor seating, and some have dog-friendly options as well. So I encourage everyone to go out and support our local businesses this month. And when you are out, be sure to post and follow the hashtags, hashtag Crave Monco and hashtag Make It Monco on social media.
Great, thank you. Okay, great. Then we will move on to public comment. Do we have any public comments today, Ms. Governor?
Yes.
Okay. Then Mr. Stein, if you could just read the rules, please.
Good morning. All speakers should sign to the meeting sheet available in the back of the room or virtually, as indicated by Ms. Co. Francisco. All speakers must come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or remain to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter of remain to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether matters remain to county business once the solicitor has made determination on such, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and been requested to sit down shall be grounds for removal or muting from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. As at always, the commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at commissioners@montcopa.org.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Co. Francisco.
First, we have Pauline Braccio.
Oh, and I'm sorry, these are comments on today's agenda. Are you coming to today's agenda? I apologize.
We just have general public comments today.
Okay, so, all right, Ms. Braccio, I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure there was nothing for the agenda.
I can always use the exercise. Good morning, my name is Pauline Braccio, and I'm from Townes and Township. And it's really good to see everybody that's here today. I have a lot of admiration for people in law enforcement. And actually, Valerie, I'm very confused as to why we're having this huge monster of a justice center being built, and at the same time, there's a lot of residential expansion in Northtown. When you have a denser population, and usually the crime rate goes up, and you have this huge justice center, yet when DA Steele came and asked for more money to increase his budget for training, I believe he was denied. And just a few weeks ago, Sheriff Kilkeny came and asked you to increase his budget as well for these fine people here today. I, you know, I count on them. I've been a longtime, well, actually lifelong resident of Montgomery County. And in Townes and Township where I reside, I have a very good relationship with the police department there. And as I said, I don't understand why you are not increasing the budget for the police department and the sheriff's departments. And if you will, and if you are, that should be made public. We should all know what you are doing, because as far as I can see with all the inflation, you're literally defunding both of these departments. And that's basically all I have to say today. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yes, we just have two folks online. We'll go to Kim Henderson. You can unmute.
Good morning, Kim Henderson, East Norton 24. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to also let you know, my comment was regarding the agenda. And the online recording didn't come on until Solicitor Stein was actually giving the rules for engagement. I just wanted to let you know. I wanted to comment on two things regarding the actual agenda this morning. And one, I just wanted to offer the police officers prayer so that we can, you know, include Sheriff John Foster, I want to thank you for your service, sir, and all of the police. So I'm going to just call that Saint Michael, please come in and bless over all of our police officers, all of our first responders, and all of the county officials to keep everyone safe and, you know, continue doing the good work that you guys are doing. So in the Lord's name, amen. I also, in regard to the agenda, wanted to echo what Pauline said about Officer Kilkeny asking for further funding for the sheriffs. I don't think we can pay them enough, and all of you, thank you so much. And then also on the agenda today is regarding the extension of the Hurricane Ida Disaster Declaration. And I wanted to make sure that would include Mr. Fulton's request from Bridgeport from the June meeting where he came in and said that his sister was facing homelessness. I hope that you're going to speak to that in the meeting today and give us an update along with the extension. What does that actually cover? And then lastly, in the event that I don't get to have my additional voter, or, I'm sorry, general comments, I just wanted to say that we are still here fighting for election integrity and look forward to working with all of you in the future on that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, we have Stephanie Kenzie. You can now unmute yourself.
Thank you, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Good morning.
Thank you, good morning. My name is Stephanie, and I'm a lifelong resident of Montgomery County. I'm also the mother of two young children, ages three years old and nine months. I never imagined that when I became a parent, I'd have to deal with the shutdowns that your Office of Public Health has arbitrarily instilled upon parents and schools. Not once, not twice, but now anytime it seems, at the drop of a hat, for the past two and a half years. I'm speaking today because two weeks ago, I was notified that my daycare was directed to shut down multiple classrooms by the county Office of Public Health, yet again. I had to pay hundreds of dollars in full tuition without any care services provided, yet again. Initially, in 2020, even into 2021, we were willing to understand. But now, with the information we know today, it's just not acceptable. So I come here today on behalf of working parents everywhere in this county, those that are too exhausted, too burnt out to speak up, who have given up really any hope that this will ever end, and who could not afford to pay daycare tuition or have no backup care for their young children. So I take time out of my busy workday today to speak up. In the guise of, quote, "public health," this county, I believe, has completely overstepped time and again. You have no right telling daycares to shut down. You have no right interfering with our families' lives. And the overreaching COVID-above-all policies will never be accepted by me as normal and many, many other families and counties, and families in this county, ever. I believe that your role should uphold the best interests of the public. And I called the county COVID helpline, left a message simply asking for more information about my son's preschool closure. I didn't get any response or explanation. So I come here today, this first time I've ever done anything like this, to speak up. But I refuse to sit by idly and let this county's policies continue to interfere with our families' lives anymore, and I believe that it's time for you to do better as county leaders. Thank you very much.
We just have one more, Barb Furman. You can now unmute. Barbara, if you're talking, we can't hear you. Barbara, you're showing as unmuted on my end. Again, we're not able to hear you if you're speaking.
All right, why don't we move on, since we have a lot of guests here today? And we can give her another opportunity later if there's a technical issue. Yeah. All right, so next is approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the June 16, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, so next, we are moving on to recognize one of our own, Deputy John Foster. And we're very pleased to have a number of guests here with us today, including colleagues from Philadelphia. And I'll turn over to Sheriff Kilkeny to start us off.
Sure, thank you very much, Commissioner Chair R. Kush. John, can you come over? And Officer Toughbill, can you come over? Great. Okay. Monday night, as we were all celebrating the Fourth of July, everyone in the sheriff's office really had their hearts have a wave of concern over when they learned that one of our own, Deputy Foster, along with Philadelphia Officer Sergio Diggs, had sustained gunshot wounds while working security detail at the Fourth of July festivities at the Art Museum in Philadelphia. Thankfully, what followed was a collective sigh of relief when they learned that both officers had been treated at a local hospital for grazed wounds and were released. Although tragedy was averted, literally by inches, the prevalence of violence that is increasingly spilled into public spaces is troubling. And it's a troubling trend that presents unprecedented challenge to those who serve and protect, like this deputy sheriff and this Philadelphia police officer. Deputy Foster, if anybody knows him, and I know everybody knows him, because John is just a great guy and a guy that's at the scanners and will make a joke and everybody likes. He's one of those personalities in your office. He's an example of someone who meets those challenges every day. He's worked for us for 17 years. He volunteers all the time, and he volunteered to be on one of our highest-profile units, our bomb squad, which is why he was down in Philadelphia, providing mutual aid. We work as interagencies, Philadelphia Police, Philadelphia Sheriff, Montgomery County Sheriff, all our local police departments. We're really one family. He's been on that squad for three years, which requires a lot of training and a lot of extra time and a lot of extra duty away from his family. He also worked as a part-time police officer to make the ends meet with the North Wales Police Department, and frequently signs up for details like he was doing in Philadelphia. On top of that, he's a devoted husband and father. When I spoke to him on Tuesday, you know, he was really concerned about his son. His son, who was up in the Poconos, a Boy Scout camp, and didn't want this all distracting from, you know, his son getting that Boy Scout experience. And as I said previously, he's one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet. Everyone knows him. He works in our courts division, greeting visitors and employees with a smile and a kind word. And he's great at something. He remembers everybody's name and little details about them. So we're honored by his service and proud that he is receiving this acknowledgement. But the most important thing really is that John, Deputy Sheriff Foster, our friend, is okay. So I'd like to go ahead and also, before I present these two coins, and we have these two proclamations from the county commissioners, I also want to talk about Officer William Toughbill. I obviously did not know him till yesterday, but I really appreciate one of our bomb techs, Deputy Cagliola, who was on the scene, that sent me an email. And he said, "This guy had Foster's back." When everything was going on, and there was a lot of chaos, and everyone was worrying about Officer Diggs, rightfully so, Officer Toughbill saw that our guy was wounded too, and he took care of him. He got him in the squad car, got him to the hospital, and he comforted him. And I don't know him very well, but speaking to him on the phone and speaking what Foster said about him and how he treated him, I know he's one of Philadelphia's finest. So I really want to thank you very much. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to present a coin to you. Present a coin to you. And wanted to thank the commissioners for this opportunity. I'm also going to go ahead and read their brief, two proclamations from the county commissioners here. I don't want to take up too much of your time. So this is to Officer William Toughbill. During large gatherings and events in our region, Montgomery County Sheriff's deputies provide security and specialized aid to neighboring police departments. This mutual aid was provided on Monday, July 4, 2002, during the City of Philadelphia's Welcome America Fourth of July celebrations. While staffing the event, Sheriff Deputy John Foster was wounded by gunfire, sustaining a grazed wound to his shoulder, and was aided by Police Officer Toughbill. At the time of the incident, the scene was of chaos and initial confusion. While many of the Philadelphia officers were rightfully attending to their own, Officer Diggs, Officer Toughbill, a highway patrolman, immediately approached Deputy Foster and Deputy Cagliola to assist with Deputy Foster's injuries. Upon realizing that Deputy Foster had also sustained a gunshot wound, Officer Toughbill immediately and without hesitation placed him in his patrol vehicle and rushed him to Jefferson Hospital. Officer Toughbill kept Deputy Foster calm during the transport and remained at the hospital with him for the entire day of his stay, making sure he was okay. So I want to present this to Officer Toughbill and thank him on behalf of the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office in Montgomery County. Appreciate that. Thank you. Now, I want to read the proclamation for Deputy Foster. During large gatherings and events in our region, the sheriff's office provides security and specialized aid to neighboring police departments. The mutual aid was provided on Monday, July 4, 2002, during the City of Philadelphia's Fourth of July celebrations. While staffing the event, Sheriff Deputy Foster was wounded by gunfire, sustaining a grazed wound to his shoulder. We recognize Deputy Foster for his bravery and commitment, not just to the residents of Montgomery County, but to the residents of our region by working that mutual aid. We thank him for his 17 years of service to our county and the sheriff's office, where he serves as a member of our bomb squad, our explosive and hazardous disposal unit. In addition to the bomb squad, he has worked with our SER team, our Community Emergency Response Team, and his experience in the civil transportation and all the divisions in our office is invaluable. Deputy Foster also served as an officer with the Lower Moreland Police Department, Spring City Police Department, and currently serves with mighty North Wales Police Department, one of our smallest boroughs in the county. So again, here is a proclamation honoring Deputy Foster. Thanks, sir. And I know I've done a lot of speaking, but I want to see if Deputy Foster would like to say something.
Hey, Deputy Foster, why don't you just hold for one second? I think we have some guests here from Philadelphia, Inspector Singletary and Lieutenant Fitzpatrick. Why don't we give them an opportunity to say a few words, and then we'll make sure you get a chance to go. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. On behalf of the City of Philadelphia, the sheriff went over most of the incidents that happened on the Fourth. The officer of the mayor from, I want to present the citation also to Deputy John Foster. I won't read it, because he read mostly everything that had on the citation here. So I'll just present this to John and say, "Thank you very much, Chief, I appreciate it."
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much for coming. Yeah, all right.
Obviously, my name is John Foster. I just want to say thank you very much to the officers of Philadelphia Police Department. They were phenomenal. I can't say thank you enough, and I can't speak highly enough of the Philadelphia Police Department and definitely certain members of that department. It was a chaotic scene after a little bit, but unfortunately, myself and Officer Diggs just received minor grazed wounds. We were lucky in that account. We weren't targeted. We were just happy to be in the wrong place at the wrong time. Or the right place at the right time, I don't know. Either one, we were fortunate enough to walk away with just a few scratches. I can't thank enough for the sheriff's department, my fellow bomb techs that were right there with me, Deputy John Cagliola especially, never left my side. He was there the whole time. He was able to call my wife right away and let her know, which he's still scarred well. He was also able to call my father, who's a retired police officer himself, and let him know what was going on, and then make notifications to everybody else. Lieutenant Al Stewart from our bomb unit came down right away. Ryan Volk, Tim Metz, has been invaluable. Randy Shuttler, I can't say thank you enough to everybody that's reached out to me. It's very overwhelming. I cannot possibly answer everybody back, I just can't. And I just can't thank you enough from the bottom of my family's heart and mind about the outpouring I've gotten. I just have to say thank you.
Well, Deputy Foster. First of all, we're just so glad that you are okay and that Officer Diggs is also doing fine and recovering, and we wish you a very speedy recovery, and so glad that you could spend some time right away with your family and especially to get up to see your son at camp, to let him know that everything is okay. And I just want to join Sheriff Kilkeny in condemning this senseless gun violence and just remind folks how our law enforcement works together across our region. These mutual aid agreements are extremely important. They are put to use whenever there are large events like the Welcome America Celebration, the NFL Draft, the Pope's Visit, you know, events like that, where it really is a regional commitment to keeping everybody safe. We're so fortunate here in the county to have a bomb disposal unit with a very, very high level of professionalism and expertise. And as such, they're often called upon to attend these events just in case. And so it was in that context that our two deputies were there, and just so grateful that everyone is okay. Very, very grateful to Officer Toughbill for stepping up. I don't know if you're working well. John can be, you know, keeping him calm. I'm sure that was really a mutual aid that you weren't expecting to have to do, but we really, really appreciate that. But thank you all so much. It's a real sense of what working together means and supporting one another, and we are truly, truly grateful. Thank you.
Officer Toughbill, thank you for taking care of our guy, as Sheriff Kilkeny said, because Deputy Foster is definitely our guy. He is one of the most popular county employees. John, like when I came in, I was looking around. John, like when I came in, I was looking around the room to find you, and then I finally found you and you were smiling. And you're always smiling. Thank you for your service. I'm so grateful that it was just a grazed wound, and I think we can't emphasize enough that you were out serving and protecting people. So you were at the right place because you were doing what you do. So I'm just glad you're okay. I look forward to seeing you out front. I'll take it easy on you. I won't joke as much for a while unless you want me to, but I'm just grateful that you're okay. It was heart-wrenching when the sheriff texted Tuesday morning first that it was a deputy and then it was Holstring and they said the name, and everybody knows you, everybody loves you, and we're just grateful that you're okay.
I've had the pleasure of knowing Deputy Sheriff John Foster for about 11 years, and it's never been better to see you, John. And God was certainly looking over you the night of July 4th, and I thank God that the bullet struck in such a way and a position that you're fully recovered mostly at this point and you've had a smooth recovery. And this tragic event that took place on the Parkway in Philadelphia is a harsh reminder of the struggles and dangers law enforcement professionals face on a daily basis. Law enforcement has always been a difficult and dangerous job, but sadly, the violent rhetoric directed towards law enforcement in recent years has made their job even more difficult and even more dangerous. The defund police movement, unwillingness to prosecute crime, and the soft bail reform policies have clearly resulted in unprecedented levels of lawlessness in cities such as Philadelphia. Far too often, our modern-day legal system goes soft on criminals and forgets about the victims of crime and also forgets about the police officers who protect us and respond to crime. That is why I've always proudly blacked the blue and firmly believe that law and order is critical to the well-being of our society. What happened to Deputy Foster and Officer Diggs is a reminder that all our heroes in law enforcement deserve our utmost respect and gratitude for their commitment to providing public safety and protecting our communities. I'm proud of each and every one of you wearing the uniform. I can't thank you enough for what you do on a daily basis, but also the commitment your family brings alongside of you, knowing that you face danger and various uncertainty every day when you do your job. So God bless each and every one of you and thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Sheriff. Next, Rebecca Swanson to talk about a new CPACE project. You'll have to follow that, so I'm sorry.
I know. No cameras for this one?
Nobody wants to hear about CPACE.
I don't know what the problem is.
This is a very, very different presentation, but first Rebecca Swanson, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. I'm the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority. Before I begin, I want to send our thank you to Deputy Foster and the Philadelphia Police Department and sending our best wishes to all of them. So here to talk about the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Project. This was approved by the Commissioners in 2019. It's a very innovative funding mechanism for energy-efficient construction and renovation of currently commercial, industrial, and agricultural buildings. Montgomery County has been a leader in this program. We have now, happy to announce, completed our second project under this funding. It is in partnership with our third-party provider. We helped a light industrial facility home to cook technologies. It's in Green Lane Borough. They manufacture various wire and metal goods. They received $1.2 million in CPACE funding for solar panels and LED lighting. It will be an estimated energy savings for them of $37,000 per year, which shows the impact of this program, but also just shows how important energy conservation is. So it's very exciting that that project has been funded. They are getting started right now. So again, we want to thank the Commissioners for their support and very early adoption of the program. And very relatedly, I'd like to mention that just last week, the Pennsylvania State Legislature passed Senate Bill 635. It's awaiting the governor's signature. It is a bill that we, the RDA, and the county has been advocating for. It's going to expand the CPACE program to multifamily, mixed-use buildings of five or more units, which has been, we've been asked by developers for years, we would love to apply this to multifamily. I know there's already one in line right down the street that would like to use it. It also allows for indoor air quality improvements such as HVAC upgrades, air purification and ventilation, which we know in the current environment with the pandemic, that many office buildings want to do to help attract their workers to come back. And also for resiliency improvements, which again, which we saw with Hurricane Ida, it's any improvement to a property to help them withstand natural disasters, including blood mitigation and wind resistance. So this is a really important development for property owners and developers throughout the county to work on energy efficiency, but also protecting their buildings and their workers going forward. It's hugely beneficial. We anticipate a definite uptick in projects as soon as the new guidelines are set and it becomes law in about six days. And then I finally wanted to mention, slightly off-topic, but the RDA was recently recertified as the county's Certified Economic Development Organization through the Pennsylvania Industrial Development Authority, which is great. And everything from the previous MCDC has been fully transferred over to the RDA as the CDO, which we're very excited about. So that's it.
Well, thank you so much for that update, and we are very proud to be one of the first counties to adopt the CPACE program here, one of the first counties in the state, and it's great to see this growing success and very exciting that the criteria will be broadened, particularly in a county like ours with the composition of so many mixed-use developments and other opportunities. It sounds like it will really be a great boost to those property owners.
Yes, and there will be enabling legislation needed locally with the resolution. We'll probably have that at least, if not in August, in September, for the Commissioners to consider.
We're looking to reviewing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, next, Matt Pocack. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. We have a slide presentation here, which should be coming up on the screen, but I am here today to talk about the newest iteration of the Region's Transportation Improvement Program, which is covering fiscal years 2023 to 2034. This is a version of the presentation that was delivered at the Montgomery County Planning Commission Board by Matt Edmund, and Matt has also been a great help in making sure that this document comes to life. In the current status of it is that the public comment period has closed and is now awaiting final board adoption. That should take place at the DVRPC Board Meeting at the end of July, but this is a great time for us to explain to Montgomery County residents what exactly is coming up from the transportation standpoint over the next decade and a couple of years. So on the next slide, what is the tip itself? Next slide. It is the Region's capital budget for how federal and state transportation funds are delivered to direct projects, between federal gas taxes, state gas taxes, other sources of revenue that come in to actually fund those transportation construction projects that you see out on the roads. On the next slide, it is also part of the Region's planning process. We take things like county comprehensive plans, Monco 2040, regional comprehensive plans like DVRPC's Connections 2050, PennDOT's long-range plans. All of it comes together into a budget for actual projects and planning items around the region. Next slide. The tip itself contains eight different sections, one for each of the five counties covered by DVRPC, as well as a various section covering region-wide programs, a special section just for interstate projects, and transit itself, which we will go into a little bit more later in the presentation. The tip covers 12 different fiscal years, starting on October 1st, 2022, for fiscal year 2023, and going out all the way to fiscal year 2034. Next slide. It's also updated every two years, so you can go back onto DVRPC's website and see tips for the entire 21st century to see how projects have evolved and the funding has been allocated to them over time. On the next slide, probably the most important point of this presentation, if you take nothing else away from this, the tip is a budgeting tool. It is used to have those 12 years of available funding dollars from the feds and the state structured into projects themselves. It is not and should not be used as a direct construction timetable. More often than not, if the projects make their way through the proper engineering processes, they are able to get accelerated and funding is made available for them as it becomes available. Quick overview of some of what the tips in the past have done for us here in Montgomery County. On the next slide, you'll see some of the major projects that have taken place around the county since 2015. You see some of the projects on the top that have been completed, such as the Lafayette Street Extension here in downtown Norristown that the County Planning Commission and Assets and Infrastructure had a large hand in working with, as well as Markley Street on the upper end of Norristown and the Valley Forge River Crossing Complex project set at US 422. The bottom row shows some of the projects that are currently under construction, as many Montgomery County residents are probably well aware. DeKalb Pike, Section 202-600 throughout most of Montgomery County. 309 Connector Phase 2 has just started under construction, and the Chester Valley Trail in Upper Marion Bridgeport at Norristown is hopefully reaching completion. We have actually spent, through the tip, and thanks to efforts of organizations such as the Pennsylvania Turnpike, close to $1.8 billion on transportation projects just in Montgomery County since 2010. So 12 years ago, if we were looking at the tip that was implemented back then, about $1.8 billion has made its way into transportation projects. Everybody knows that all sorts of construction has been happening and that's the pure result of it. This funding is coming in and now we need to figure out what is going to happen for the next 12 years. So what exactly is in the new tip? Well, first, it's important to note the night that rode in to help save the transportation funding structure as it was. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was passed in November, also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, the big infrastructure bill, really helped to save transportation projects and policies throughout most of the country. In this particular region, what did it help do for us? It directly funded a large increase in certain areas such as specific bridge projects. This new tip has 35 new bridge projects identified for construction, seven of which are in Montgomery County and two of which are actually county-owned. That include the Woodmont Road Bridge in West Conshohocken and the Penland Pike Bridge in Whitpe. There's also $70 million more that have been set aside and allocated for additional locally-owned and off-system bridge projects. IIJA also helped to fund a large increase in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure spending, totaling $111 million more set aside for transportation alternatives over the 12 years of the life of the tip, as well as $100 million more per year for transit projects. On the next slide, you'll see the overall statistics for the FY23 tip for the region itself. The document itself, this budget allocates a total of $21.2 billion for highways and transit projects over the next 12 years, and that's up 37% from the previous tip, largely thanks to the IIJA. You see the numbers for highways and transit on the screen. We actually spend more money on transit projects than we do highway projects in the five-county Philadelphia region. And the IIJA funding for the bridges and bicycle ped and transit are all incorporated into these numbers that you see on the screen. Specifically for Montgomery County, our highway program has a total of 61 projects that are totaling $931 million over the next 12 years, a rather sizable chunk of which is in the first four years, which is the funding that is most available for PennDOT to use on projects right away. And 85% of that $931 million total is set aside for actual construction of the roadways, highways, bridges, and other projects that you see out on the roads. How does this money break down? The top category is technically classified as ITS and Signals, receiving about a quarter of a billion dollars, but that is mostly the I-76 Integrated Corridor Management Project. You also see the number breakdown for bridge projects, capacity additions, intersection treatments, roadway rehabilitations, and bicycle pedestrian projects on the screen. There are four projects specifically that will be receiving more than $50 million thanks to this new tip, one of which I've already mentioned, the Integrated Corridor Management Project on I-76, largely in Upper Marion and West Conshohocken. We also see the 309 Connector Phase 3 connection, which will take the newly extended 309 Connector Phase 2 portion out to the 309 Expressway in Bucks County. 422 Section M1B is the last remaining piece of 422 east of Pottstown that needs to be reconstructed. And of course, important to the county is Bridge Pike Sections A, B, and C, basically stretching from the Turnpike overpass all the way down to Crescent Avenue in White Marsh. There are also three new projects to the tip that are worth mentioning at this time. We're actually coming up with 309 Connector Phase 4, which will help to relieve some of the traffic congestion at the new Turnpike Slip Ramp in Towamansett Township, and hopefully also benefiting Lower Salford as well. The Route 29 and 113 intersection in Perkyomen Township, and the DeKalb Street reconstruction and two-way transformation in Norristown. Engineering on all of these projects should hopefully begin soon after the federal fiscal year starts. From a transit investment standpoint, SEPTUS' capital budget this year is now over $1 billion for the first time, and they are using this money to make some large investments in things like the Norristown High Speed Line, reconstructing some of the railroad ties and rail along with Bridgeport and the Norristown Transportation Center stations. And some of the projects of significance are being highlighted, such as bus revolution and regional rail spillover efforts from their planning, as well as replacement of regional rail cars, trolley modernization efforts in Philadelphia, and the King of Prussia Rail Project. It's important to note that part, Pottstown Area Rapid Transit, is also covered with the Region's tip. They get approximately $2.5 million each year for the first four years, most of which goes to their operating budget, though there is some for capital and replacement of buses. So what's next? Well, overall, Montgomery County's transportation system is maturing. There isn't a lot of green space and there's not a lot of push for new highways or major arterials to get built. So what are we going to see more of in terms of roadway projects going forward? PennDOT has focused on safety specifically and hopefully installing some additional roundabouts. The one off of Old Skipback Pike actually just got let a couple of months ago, and there's others that are being planned and in the works for Lower Marion and Western Arton. There's also intersection improvements such as adding turn lanes, possibly some shoulders, bridge replacements. There are still plenty of bridges and we keep seeing bridges affected by climate change and other major disasters, so the bridge replacement process is kind of an ongoing one. And the multifaceted projects, we're always looking to make sure that whatever transportation investment is made, it's from a complete streets approach. So whether it's upgrading for safety, intelligent traffic systems, bicycle and pedestrian design, the vehicle flows themselves. We work with PennDOT very closely at the Planning Commission and we work with DVRPC to make sure all of these infrastructure projects are the best that they possibly can be for our residents. Did we get everything that we wanted to see into the tip? Unfortunately, we didn't. There were still several projects that, just based on the pure amounts of dollars available, weren't able to make it into this tip. We are hopeful that as some of the projects that have been going on for years start to wrap up, there will be more room for more projects and more ability for municipalities across the county to get some of their longstanding roadway pain points addressed thanks to federal and state dollars. But we do need more than that money that is available. There might be ways locally or regionally to confront that over the next couple of years. But I do want to thank everybody for their time on this. If anyone has any additional questions about this, the tip is available for the public to look at at any point. It's at DVRPC.org/tip, or T-I-P, and once the document is adopted at the board meeting in July, we will start using all of those funding dollars for as many projects as we can. Thanks, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thanks very much, Mr. Pocack. Great update for everyone, and I just want to underscore how important the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill has been to allowing us to move forward some of these really critical, high-priority projects that will make a tremendous difference all across our county, from here in Norristown to across the to across the region. So very, very excited to have these opportunities and keep people busy for a long time and it's going to keep a lot of people complaining about having to make detours and other things. But unfortunately, that is the price of repairing some of these roads. And I also just want to take a moment to acknowledge Mr. Matt Edman, who will be transitioning away from the county. He is not going far. We will still be working together, but just want to say thank you so much for your years of service to our county. Matt has helped me understand the tip in a lot of, it's a very complicated, very comprehensive document, and he's really helped me learn to understand it and where the opportunities are for our county in that document. And he has a comprehensive knowledge of the tip, which if anyone's ever seen the actual printout of it, it's about this thick and it's really not, doesn't make for good, interesting reading. So just want to thank you for that and for all of your service to our community over these last few years.
Thanks for the update, Mr. Popak, and I'll join the chair in acknowledging Mr. Edman's. Thank you. Brought me a lot during my time here. I'm glad it's going to SEPTA, so we'll continue to see you and continue to work with you. But best wishes. Thank you for all your hard work. Bye.
Matt, your presentation was very informative. Thank you. And Matt Edmans, I also wish you well in your next chapter. It was always a pleasure working alongside with you and I wish you continued success. Thanks for your service in Montgomery County.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Georgetown.
Morning, Commissioners. As you know, we completed a bond sale last week, which was planned. Today, we have our financial advisor, Dan Kozlov, to present those results to you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Dean. Nice to be here. Yes, going to provide a quick overview and summary of the bond transaction, which the county brought to market last week. Try, please. Just high-level summary of the transaction. In total, the county issued $153,155,000 of general obligation bonds. As I said, the bonds were sold into the market last Wednesday on June 29th, and the delivery or closing of the transaction is expected to occur in a couple of weeks here on July 28th. The bonds were issued to finance and fund various capital projects within the county and to generate a total project fund amount of $175 million, and they were issued on a tax exempt basis and also to fund the cost of issuance of the bond. The county's AAA rating, something that I'm very proud to be a part of here. Back in 2012, the county was downgraded for the first time from AAA to AA1. And in the years from there up until 2018, the county and the county staff and the leadership worked very hard to reposition itself financially and working with Moody's Rating Agency to get back its AAA rating, which it did in 2018. And that AAA rating has been affirmed in every bond issuance since. The most recent report from Moody's, which they issue every time the county does come to market, so this one was issued in mid-June, cites several components as the reason for the county's AAA stable rating, a sizable and diverse tax base, strong financial position with healthy cash and reserve levels, above-average resident wealth and income, and manageable leverage, debt and pension, funded pension level. Moody's also talks about the financial position of the county being satisfactory and the continued expectation of strong fund balance, the policies of the county, the transparency of the county and its budgeting practices, and the management of the county's financial position. It also talks a lot about the large dynamic tax base presence, a large presence of institutional entities like universities, health, the like, and the way that the county has managed through various challenges in the past several years, the two largest of, being of course, the COVID-19 and Hurricane Ida, which had to be in. To get into the sale, again, we brought these bonds to market last week on 29th. Bidders were invited to submit bids up until 11:00 AM. It was offered on an all or none basis, and we received a very good response from the market on this. You can see the list of 11 bidders that all put in bids to purchase all of the bonds. That is robust. We have been quite volatile market, both across equity, across classes, asset classes, including equities and putting fixed income. That includes bonds. You have days and times where investors are apt to sit on the sidelines and not use their capital to purchase bonds because of the volatility in this market. It's our view that this strong show up, showing out of investors and bidders has a lot to do with the strength of the county, the strength of the county's financial position and the fact that folks out there want to own county bonds. The winning bidder or low-cost bid was from Morgan Stanley. That was a 3.54% in total. The difference between that and the second-best bid, what we call the cover bid, being JP Morgan, was less than 0.01%, so a really small margin. We like to see that. That means that the bidders are aggressively going after county bonds. So this was a good, good result, good outcome for the county on the. Just to look at this sale relative to past sales, you can see on the bottom is this transaction. The munis will high-grade, yield curve is shown here. And again, this volatility we've seen in the market, we've seen a uptick in interest rates, pretty significant and pretty unprecedented since early January. On the chart above, you can see the darker blue line at the top is where we are today and the lighter blue line, which is where we were when we last came to market, was last, January of last year, is really where the market was close to its all-time low. So a pretty big differential in the market in which we've sold into, but still, all things being equal, being able to borrow $155 million of bonds at gnawing costs of 3.53%, we think is pretty attractive. Just to talk a bit about volatility in the market that we're pricing into, go to the next slide, please. The top chart here is municipal bond fund flows. What you see here is going back many years here, this shows two months, but it goes beyond that. You see positive fund flows, that is, people putting their money into the market to buy municipal bonds. This is through retirement funds and the like, places like Vanguard, Bell, and Black. You can see beginning in early January, that goes negative, right side of that graph. That's when the volatility began in our market. That's where a lot of investors pulled money out of markets to sit cash to avoid that volatility. Why did we have that volatility? There are a few things that drove it. We saw inflation uptick significantly and we continue to see that. We saw activity in the Ukraine with the Russia invasion, which contributed to that. We saw the Fed take action there and raise rates. All of that led to what you see on the bottom, which is the high-grade tax exempt rates going back to 2002. You could see them very low following the Great Recession in 2008. You can then see them very low again following COVID pandemic, but then beginning in January of this year, when all that activity began, inflation, Russia, Fed taking action, it's went up significantly. That's the market continues to bounce around. The next slide is a bit of a closer snapshot here, looking from January of this year, well, January of last year up until now. If you look beginning in January this year on these charts, you can see both on the 10-year on the left side, 30-year on the right side, US Treasury in yellow, high-grade tax exempt rates, blue, you see what's happened since January of this year and that uptick. On a historic basis, while on the shorter end of the curve, we are relatively high going back 10, 20 years on a relative basis. That's really driven by where the Fed puts their rate. As you get further out, 5, 10, and then longer, we're at about the average going back for the last 20 years in terms of municipal borrowing. So again, it's been pretty jarring to see rates go up from where they were, but they went up from all-time lows and throughout the curve tend to be generally in the middle, think about, on a relative historic. These are the final bond pricing resort, results for the county. The winning bid, we worked with the county's Bond Council, Cozen-O'Connor, to confirm that the bid and that the ultimate results were in compliance with Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Government Unit Debt Act requirements, which they are. And you can see here the final pricing results for the bonds and the ultimate spread to the high-grade municipal index in the far-right column there. Again, attractive levels to be issuing at this market, and that's really a result of strong position and financial strength and name brand that the county has at our markets. This is the debt service on these bonds. The gray area is the existing county debt service. The green is the newly issued bonds. You can see there's a significant drop-off in debt service that occurs in 2024 in the existing debt, and we take, we take advantage of that in these issues in terms of putting more debt service beyond that year relative to years approaching 2024. And you can see that in greater detail on the next slide in the far-right column here, or sorry, in the middle column. You can see we structured the debt in column C, about $7 million in 23, fiscal year 23 and 24, and then it ratchets up to about $13.1 million in the years after. And again, that's taking advantage of that debt service cliff that occurs beginning in 2024. Thank you all. I appreciate it. On behalf of PFM, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the county and look forward to your further great work with Dean and the staff and the rest of the team that has worked together for helping the county with its finances. Happy to answer any.
Well, thanks so much, and we really appreciate it. And it's really encouraging to have achieved that AAA bond rating now for five years in a row, despite the many, many challenges that we faced, particularly in this last year with Hurricane Ida and with COVID. So that was very, very good news when that came through, and I was really struck by the number of bidders that we had. From my memory, I didn't go back and check, but it seems like, at least as long as back, as far as I can remember, that that is very much higher number than we've had previously.
It's on the high side, which is a great sign. We've, we've brought deals to market in this market where we've had one to show. Seeing 11 is.
Yeah, it's a real testament, I think, to, as you said, have our brand out there in this marketplace and that we are, we are an entity that people want to invest in.
Absolutely.
Really terrific and a real testament to Dean and his team. We really appreciate all of your work and continue to carry forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, for the presentation. Dean, thank you for your leadership. I noticed both of you guys almost smiled during this, which is.
It's not getting carried away.
Which is not, we got some in there, so that's a good sign. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I should add that Josh also is a big part of this and great work with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Anything else that you have? He wants to get that last word.
Yeah. As Dan said, we're going to be closing in the next few weeks, so then we'll receive the new bond proceeds, which will continue to fund the capital program. And I had mentioned in the past, we've been drawing down on the prior bond issue, and that's almost depleted, so the timing is just right for this one. And did want to acknowledge the whole financing team. I know, you know, we've done that, but we have a, you know, really deep bench with Suzanne Mays and the Cozen team, Josh and the finance staff and PFM's team. We're really well-subordinated on these transactions. So, thank you.
Well, thanks to everyone. We really appreciate it. Good. All right. We will move on to resolutions. Mr. Hartman, authorization of the acquisition of the Evans property in Perkyomen Township. Good morning.
Good morning. So yes, today we're seeking your authorization to acquire a 1.07-acre parcel owned by Thomas Lee and Vicky Ann Evans at 465 Ron's Road in Perkyomen Township. And I would direct your attention to the slide up on the screen. This is Perkyomen Township right in here. The property is located within this circle. It's just east of the junction between Route 113, where it hits Gravel Pike or Route 29. The red line that you see going from north to south here is actually the Perkyomen Trail, which you're familiar with, and this property is very near to that county asset. Kelly, please. So this is zeroing in on the, on the property itself. Again, on your left, to the west, is Gravel Pike, Route 29. On the bottom, to the south, is Ron's Road. The property that we're looking at is highlighted here in green. And as you can see, it's, it's a good property in that it's immediately adjacent to land that's currently owned by Montgomery County, namely this parcel right here, as well as this parcel located right up here. And in this blue polygon, that's highlighting what is an existing trailhead for the Perkyomen Trail, known as the Ron's Road Trailhead. And you can see that's immediately adjacent to the Perkyomen Trail, which is shown here in that yellow dash line. Thanks, Kelly. And to the right, of course, is Perkyomen Creek. This will be a fee acquisition. This property was severely impacted by flooding that was caused by the remnants of Hurricane Ida that came through the area in September of 2021. Following the acquisition of this property, all of the existing structures on the property will be demolished. And if you look at the slide, you can see behind the green, there's an existing primary structure down here at the bottom, right along the road, and there's some secondary accessory structures on the property, like a barn and a shed. Those will all be demolished, and the property would be returned to a semi-natural state to accommodate future trailhead expansion of the existing trailhead and improvements to the property and to establish additional public open space. Late last year, Planning Commission and Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites staff assessed this property, along with the two adjacent properties to the west, utilizing the Planning Commission's open space criteria, and collectively concluded that it would be a worthy county acquisition for many of the reasons that I just described to you, namely its adjacency to existing county land, the Perkyomen Trail, and the Ron's Road Trailhead. The county obtained an appraisal of the Evans property late last year, which indicated a post-flood or post-Ida valuation of $194,000. The property owners subsequently obtained their own independent appraisal in May of this year, per policy that has been established by the Montgomery County Transportation Authority and PennDOT, and that second independent appraisal indicated a post-flood valuation of $256,500. Earlier this month, the county's real estate negotiator verbally offered $256,500 to the property owners, and they verbally accepted. Planning Commission staff has drafted an agreement of sale for this $256,500 purchase price, and in support of such action, the County Open Space Board voted unanimously at its meeting on June 22 of 2022 in support of the acquisition of this property. And the acquisition itself would be funded under the Planning Commission's Open Space and Park Expansion Capital Line item. And finally, as a reminder, we came to you earlier this year and described to you that we had submitted a C-2-P-2 application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources this past spring to assist with funding the acquisition of this parcel, and if that grant application is awarded, approximately $41,000 of C-2-P-2 funds would be available to assist with the acquisitions, acquisition of this property, and we'll learn about the outcome of that application sometime later this fall. Thanks.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement of sale to purchase the Evans property for $256,500 and subject to the terms and conditions of the county. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Hartman.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Stein, Hurricane Ida.
Yes, thank you. As you of course recall, in early September of last year, Hurricane Ida came through Montgomery County and created quite a bit of damage. The county continues to deal with the fallout from that. Shortly after Hurricane Ida moved on, the Commissioners passed a disaster declaration, which has been renewed every 60 days. Forty today is the renewal for the most recent period of time, which would take us to the one-year mark. Unfortunately, we continue to be needed to assist individuals. Unfortunately, we continue to be needed to assist individuals to deal with fallout from Ida, and this would allow us to continue to do so.
I will move that we, the undersigned commissioners of Montgomery County pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended, do hereby declare the existence of a disaster emergency in Montgomery County. Be it further resolved that we direct the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this disaster emergency. This declaration shall take effect July 9, 2022, and last for a period of 60 days. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Stein? All right, Ms. Brown. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department Personnel List. It's a three-page document dated Wednesday, July 6, 2022, with a timestamp of 11:00 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve that July 7, 2022 Personnel Presentation is given by Human Resources Manager, Ms. Megan Brown, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Right, awards of contract, Ms. O'Malley. Starting with awards for the county.
Yes. We have a contract award for assets and infrastructure, equipment, Dear &amp; Company of Cary, North Carolina, The contract provides two Z-Track mowers for use by parks. Equipment is available through a PA state contract. Two, a contract award, assets and infrastructure vehicle, Whitmore Ford Incorporated of Mount Joy, PA, $30,950. Contract provides one 2022 Ford Escape SUV for use by roads and bridges. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Three, contract award, assets and infrastructure elevator maintenance, Otis Elevator Company of Morris Town, New Jersey, $410,637. Contract provides preventive maintenance and service for elevators in the county-owned facilities. Contract term is for five years and is subject to the labor rate adjustment and material adjustment. Labor rate adjustments are offset by multiple-year discounts and yearly prepayment discount. Services are available through omnia cooperative contracts. Four, contract award, information and technology solutions envelopes, Lindenmeyer Monroe of King of Prussia, PA, $33,550. Contract provides an estimated quantity of envelopes for print requests submitted from county departments to the county print shop. Contract was competitively bid by Burke County on behalf of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Counties Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract is for a one-year period, beginning August 1, 2022, with two optional annual renewals. Five, contract award, information and technology solutions software, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $92,369.57. Contract provides the yearly renewal of the Adobe Sign for Enterprise Subscription and Professional Services. Software is available through a Sourcewell Cooperative contract. Six, contract award, public safety equipment, Dubota Tractor Corporation of Grapevine, Texas, $30,690.61. Contract provides a full-size diesel utility vehicle and salt spreader for grounds maintenance at the Eagleville Complex. Equipment is available through a PA state contract. Seven, contract award, public safety equipment, Dear &amp; Company of Cary, North Carolina, $28,927.11. Contract provides a John Deere Gator for use at the EOC campus. Equipment is available through a PA state contract. Eight, contract award, public safety vehicle upbit, 911 Rapid Response of Anvil, PA, $29,090.60. Contract provides vehicle upbidding services, including lighting and lettering for the new Hazmet truck. Services are available through a PA state contract. Nine, contract award, public safety vehicle, Blick Fire Equipment Company Incorporated of Burdenhand, PA, $248,000. Contract provides a 2022 Ford Super Duty F-550 vehicle for use by the urban search and rescue team. This multi-discipline rescue vehicle will tow swift water rescue boats and will use, be used as quick response unit for collapsed rescue. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Ten, contract award, public safety HVAC replacement, Chadwick Service Company of Fensalem, PA, $341,000. Contract provides for replacement of an HVAC rooftop system at the Fire Academy. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Eleven, contract award, public safety, system maintenance, Integrated Security Systems LLC of Harleysville, PA, $25,028. Contract provides for the county-wide law enforcement alerting safety system, Alertus annual maintenance. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Twelve, contract amendment, information and technology solutions, wiring services, Atlantic Coast Communications of Pensacola, New Jersey, $935,533.1. Original contract provides for a three-year voice and data cabling services for county-owned facilities as per specification 6433. Amendment provides for the addition of services to provide wiring in relation to the Wi-Fi replacement project. Thirteen, there's one contract, one contract renewal, and 12 amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, awards for assets and infrastructure?
Yes. One, contract award, assets and infrastructure, construction, multiple contractors. Contract provides mechanical upgrades to the One Montgomery Plaza building. Specification 6478 was viewed by 19 providers with two responses received. Contracts are awarded to the only responding bidders that have met all qualifications of the specifications and are as follows. General Construction, PJ Dick Incorporated of Pittsburgh, PA, $7,760,000. Plumbing and Fire Protection, Guy M. Cooper of Willow Grove, PA, $249,450. Contract amendment, general construction, TN Ward Company of Ardmore, PA, $330,392. Original contract provided general construction services for the construction of the new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides anti-graffiti coating on the cast stone of the exterior of OMP, additional steel support, and parking controls. Three, contract amendment, electrical construction, Hobbs &amp; Company Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, $241,320. Original contract provided electrical services for the construction of a new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides additional switchgear required on the 10th floor of One Montgomery Plaza and an electrical panel for the existing chiller room. Four, contract amendment, mechanical construction, Guy M. Cooper Incorporated of Willow Grove, PA, $142,496. Original contract provided mechanical services for the construction of a new electrical infrastructure system in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides for upgrades to sprinkler valves, upsize of the fire pump for pressure requirements, and the addition of pressure relief valves. Five, contract amendment, architecture and engineering services, Heckendorf &amp; Shiles and Associates of Wayne, PA, $35,494. Original contract provides for design services for the emergency operations campus project. Amendment provides for design changes based on county requests for office space within the warehouse and design services for electric vehicle charging stations.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment?
Yes. I believe our capital project expenses are far too costly, and many of these are contract amendments where I oppose the original contract, so I will require a roll-call vote on this section.
Okay, Ms. Washington.
Chair Arkush.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Gale.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, awards of contract for the Southeastern Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
Yes. One, contract award, trauma kits, Tactical Medical Solutions LLC of Anderson, South Carolina, Contract provides trauma kits and training support for the Philadelphia Office of Emergency Management. Kits are single-source procurement. Two, contract renewal software, Cody Computer Service Incorporated of Pottstown, PA, $92,000. Contract provides renewal of the Cobra Net Services, which allows law enforcement and situational awareness information sharing on a regional platform for Chester County. Contract term, 8/1/2022 through 7/31/2023. Software is proprietary. Three, contract amendment, construction, Nice Construction Services Incorporated of Sellersville, PA, no cost. Original contract provided onsite construction for vehicle and trench rescue training props at the public safety training campus. Amendment provides a no-cost time extension of the contract through October 28, 2022, to allow additional work needed for an existing concrete-encased electrical conduit, existing waterline relocation, rock excavation, unsuitable material mitigation, and weather stoppage allowances.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Any closing commissioner comment? Then I will announce that our next meeting will be on July 21, 2022, and I will move to adjourn the July 7, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. We'll invite the Controller, Controller Sanchez, to the dais. Good morning. And we'll ask if there are any public comments on salary board. No? Okay. Then, Ms. Brown?
Good morning, members of the salary board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It's a three-page document dated Wednesday, July 6, 2022, with a timestamp of 11:00 a.m. Of note, we have two retirees, Elizabeth Siegfried of Early Intervention after 27 years, and Janice Holoschutz of Senior Services after 19 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for salary.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the July 7, 2022 Salary Board Presentation is given by Human Resources Manager, Ms. Megan Brown, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
Agreed.
Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have a motion around premium pay.
We are presenting a resolution to approve premium pay for select county employees who were required to work in person, providing critical services throughout the pandemic. These employees had regular interaction with members of the general public and coworkers without the ability to social distance. These employees weren't able to do their work remotely. The premium pay will be made in three installments and will not exceed $25,000. Pay will either be a $4 or $5 an hour based on the employee's department. Premium pay has been funded through sources such as the ARPA.
Is there a motion that Montgomery County will provide premium pay to certain employees in installments as outlined in the attached exhibit?
Agreed.
Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the July 7, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
Agreed.
Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.